Good morning, everyone. The public hearing of the board of trustees of United ISD is held today, Tuesday, January 19, 2021, beginning at 11:15 a.m. in the UISD boardroom. The subjects to be discussed or considered upon which any formal action may be taken are as listed below. Items that do not have to be taken in the order shown on this hearing notice, but less removed from the consent agenda. Items identified within the consent agenda will be acted on one time, at one time. Four members might participate via video conference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And again, based on the governor's executive order, GA 23, and the serial or read amendments of COVID-19 public health emergency orders that specifically ensure social distancing protocol are practiced to the greatest extent possible thus, limiting the number of persons physically present in the UISD boardroom. Therefore, in an effort to conduct public visits in a transparent manner, the district livestream this board meeting. If you want to view such a stream, you can see it on... Shall I read the rest?
No, it's all right, sir. Just go ahead and go to the public comments, and I don't think we have any public comments, and then this way, then you can open the hearings.
Okay. The public hearing, uh, public comments?
No.
No, no public comments, sir.
No public comments? Okay, open hearing. Texas Education Code 39.306 and 39.362. Presentation of United ISD Annual Report, including the TARP, TAAPR, Texas Academic Performance Report, and PIMS Financial Standard Report, describing the district's educational and financial performance.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the DIC meeting. My name is Angelica Sanchez, Director for Career and Technical Education and the DIC Chair. It is 11:18, and I call the DIC meeting to order. Our agenda item for today, as Mr. Ramirez mentioned, is the public hearing on United ISD's annual report, including the Texas Academic Performance Report and the PIMS Standard Report, describing the district's educational and financial performance. At this time, I would like to hand it over to Mr. David Gonzalez, Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Morning, members of the board, members of the audience, and Santos. This kind of sections of the annual report will include the following sections. The Texas Academic Performance Report, which is a TARP report for UISD in each campus. The 2019-2020 District Accreditation Report, the Campus Performance Objectives, the PIMS Financial Standard Report, a report of violence and criminal incidents on campuses, followed by student performance and post-secondary institutions, and finally, at the end, by TARP philosophy 2019-2020. The next slide. This first section is compiled, Texas Academic Performance Report compiled by TA, for every school district and campus using PIMS and student assessment data. The TARP is published in two different formulas, or my excuse me, a comprehensive and a PDA version. Next slide, please. 2019-2020 TARP, the current page, 2019-2020 Texas Academic Performance Report as a district. 2019 academic grade, there was no rated, not rated, declaration of state disaster. And any needs of intervention, this is a special department, which we continue to work on as we speak. At this time, I will turn it over to Executive Director of Assessment and Accountability, Ms. Amalessa.
Mr. Gonzalez, if I may. What does the declaration of state of disaster mean?
During this COVID period, the state did announce, because the declaration of state of disaster, there was no county rating for campuses or a district, or any district in the state of Texas.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Santos, and members of the audience. Again, for the record, Amalessa, Executive Director, Instructional Accountability. I'm going to be presenting parts of the TARP that are actually, we actually had data. And again, because of the declaration of state of disaster, there's some areas that we won't. So the first one that we do have data is our demographic data. And here we show the state, the region, and United ISD. The breakdown of our demographics, we are 98.9% Hispanic. We have 74.9% economically disadvantaged students in our, in our district. We serve 33.1% English learners, and at risk is a 52.8% population. So this has not changed. It's remained pretty steady over the years. Next slide, please. Again, this is a statement that due to the cancellation of Spring 2020 Star Assessment, the data will not be included into TARP. When you look at the TARP reports, what you will be seeing is the same data that we had for 2018, 2019. So there's no change in the data. The state agency did not produce any accountability ratings or reports for the school year of 1920. Next slide, please. What we do have data on, and again, because we look at the previous year, so we'll be looking at the graduates from 2019, we will have attendance and dropout rates, graduation rates, college career and military readiness, and other post-secondary indicators. Next slide, please. When we look at our annual dropout rate, you'll see a green checkmark there, because when compared to the region and the state, we have a lower dropout rate, which is, of course, thanks to our amazing campus principals that always make sure that the students get the instruction that they need, and they're able to meet their graduation requirements, and therefore do not drop out. When we look at our ninth to 12th grade dropout rate, again, we are below the state, and that is where we want to continue to be. Next slide, please. When we look at our four-year longitudinal graduation rate, again, this is for the class of 2019. And as you can see, we hold the same percentage, or we're always above the state and above the region. And again, for the class of 2019, we see that with a great graduation rate of 96.1% of our students. And of those students, 89% of them graduated with a distinguished level of achievement. So again, our students are graduating with very prepared to go into post-secondary readiness, whether it's career or college. Next slide, please. Here we look at the career, the college career and military ready for the class of 2019. And again, when you compare us to the state and to the region, we are higher at an 85.3% of our graduates. College ready, just looking at whether they're called, ready to go into an institute of higher learning, we are at a 59.4%. And again, that is higher than the region and the state. And then when we look at career, those that are going into a career certification, or even the military, we are, our graduates came in at 66.6% above, again, the state and the region. So our high schools are doing a tremendous job getting our students ready for their post-secondary life. Next slide, please. When we look at results, the TSI, Texas Success Initiative Assessment, again, we look at, in reading, we came in at a 46.7% of our students ready with reading, higher than the state. Mathematics, 26.9, again, higher than the state. When we look at the students that completed and received credit for college prep courses, this is getting them ready for college, we were at a 10.7%, which was higher than the state and the region for English Language Arts, and for math, 11.8%, again, higher than the state and the region. Next slide, please. When we look at our AP results, Advanced Placement Results, the students that are above the criteria, we're at a 59% in all subjects, again, higher than the state and higher than the region. When we look at our SAT and ACT results, there we are below the state, we're at a 54.7%. And we are higher than the state, but we continue to work with advanced academics to provide our students opportunities to do better. The Advanced Dual Credit Course Completion, this one is very important, because these are our students that graduate from high school with college hours already, college credit hours. We had 58.7% of them graduate with dual credit course, and we're above the state and above the region. Next slide, please. When we look at other post-secondary indicators, what the state looks at here is our graduates, if they enrolled in Texas institutions of higher education, in other words, colleges or universities. And this is two years, data back two years, because they have to wait to get the enrollment at the institutes of higher education. But again, you see that we have 66.9% of our graduates enrolling, and that is above the state and above the region. Now, when they enroll, they're measuring the students that go one year without having to enroll in a developmental course. Here we are below the state and below the region, but it's good to note that we gained, that we're working with our students to make sure that they are graduating college-ready, and we're doing that through all of our TSI efforts. Next slide, please. Thank you. The next section we're going to look at is, we're going to look at student information, we're going to look at program information and staff information. When we get to staff, Mr. Garcia will take that area. But let me start with the student information. Next slide, please. And this just, this part of the report just breaks down the total count and the percentage of our students in each grade level. So we're very comparable with the state in the number of students or the percent of students that we serve in each grade level. And then the bottom section that you see there is our retention rates. And though in some areas, we're a little bit higher than the state, we have, every year, we have been reducing the number of retentions, and we continue to work with that. Next slide, please. Continuing with student information, these are the students that are in the different programs. And again, when we look at our students graduating college and career readiness, I'd like you to look at the first section of data, number three, Career and Technical Education. 84% of our students are part of the CTE program, and that gives them an array of benefits, because they're able to get certified in many different areas, and that's always very beneficial for our students when they, when they leave our schools. Also, new this year to the report is, before they had always given us the information on students with disability, but new this year is that they actually gave us data broken down by the different services that we provide for our students. So you see the percentages of our students with intellectual disabilities, with physical disabilities, with autism, with behavioral disabilities, and non-categorical early childhood. So all of that information is now provided for each of our campuses and our district. When we look at class size, with the bottom part of this slide, you see that we're very comparable to the state. In some areas, we're a little bit higher, but all in all, very comparable to the state. Next slide, please. The district accreditation status, this is something that's reported every year, and so this year was reported for the 2019 school, and we are accredited. You know, we've, we've done very well financially and academically, so we remain accredited, which is something that's wonderful for our district. Next slide, please. Campus Improvement Plans. This is just to let you know that every one of our campuses engages in the Campus Improvement Plan creation or update, and this is under the School Improvement Department. And so every year, they have to come up with performance objectives, and our principals are very good about periodically checking their progress measures for their campus, which is why we've been able to do so well academically, because again, we're continuously monitoring our progress, and then our principals are making sure that they're updating their campus improvement plans to meet the needs of their campuses. Next slide, please. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. David Garcia, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources.
Good afternoon. Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, Mr. Santos, ladies and gentlemen of the viewing audience, my name is David Garcia. I am the Associate Superintendent for Human Resources. The staff information I'm going to present to you is a simple overview of what the state has compiled with us during this past year. Next slide, please. The initial information, of course, is total staff, and of course, we're talking about full-time employees with the district, and they total 6,494.1, which is 100% of our full-time employees in the school district. Professional staff total 3,351.1, which is 51.6%, 51.6% of our workforce. Number of teachers with UISD is 2,603, which is about 40% of our employee workforce. Professional staff, support staff, 468 or 7.2%. Campus administration, 174, which is 2.7% of our leadership at their respective locations. Central office, we have 103 individuals, which is at 1.6% of our staff. If you look at educational aides, these are assistants, instructional assistants in the school district, they, they number 756, which is 11.7% of our working staff. Our auxiliary staff, or support staff in that particular area is 2,886, which is about 36%. All these individuals, of course, work and strive to provide the best educational opportunities for all the students that represent our fine school district, and of course, in the direction and the leadership of Mr. Roberto J. Santos. When we look at librarians, there are full-time librarians of 47, they total 47, and of course, it is respective to all the different real instructional locations that we have in the school district. When we look at full-time counselors, 103. When we look at total minority staff, we're looking, we're looking at 6,365 employees, or 98% of our employee workforce. Furthermore, when we break down our instructional educators or teachers by ethnicity and by sex, we're looking at Hispanics, 2,505.2, or about 96% of our employee workforce. Compared to the state, Hispanic population in the teaching area is 28%. So ours, it is considerably much higher. Of course, you look at white population, 74, Asian population, 16, and you look at the comparative figures with state. When we look at gender of our instructional staff, we look at, the majority of our workforce in teaching is female, and of course, we're looking at 1,025.8, or 77% of our workforce. Regardless of gender, the school district always strives to hire the best candidates for their respective positions as they become available. Regardless of gender, you try to find the best candidates to maximize all instructional efforts in the school district. Next slide, please. When you look at our employee workforce, by degree status, it says no degree, 25.5 or 1% of our population. These are, these are individuals that the state allows for us to retain through a certification process, which is either DOI or SOQ. Very simply, what it does, as an example, if we were to have a gentleman who meets the requirements as prescribed by the state to be a teacher in welding, there is a minimum educational experience or wage-only experience that the state allows for us to recognize as they move forward to be considered to teach these classes, welding, air conditioning, refrigeration, plumbing, carpentry, and these are some of the areas that the state allows for school districts across the state to hire non-degreeed individuals to teach this respective areas. For teachers with bachelor's degree, which is about 75.6%, 1,968. With master's degree, 599 or 23%. With doctorate degree, and individuals, or 0.4% of our employee workforce. What we do in this particular area of the school district, we grow our own teachers as well. Geographically, we are isolated from San Antonio, Plortus, and the Valley, so we make excellent use of our internal efforts to try to grow our own educators, and of course, we have been very successful in that particular area. Beginning teachers, by experience, we're looking at 69 teachers, or 2.4%, 2.7%. One to five years of experience, 451 or 17% of our workforce. Six to 10 years of experience, 392. 10, 11 to 20 years, 1,148. And over 20 years, 542.8 or 20%. If you look at that last graphic compared to the state, our experienced workforce remains with the district for a longer period of time as compared to other areas of the state, very simply because people want to be here. We have an excellent work environment, as well as facilities and other benefits that we offer our employees, and of course, for they to make personal choices as to why they should continue working with this organization. Number of students, excuse me, number of students per teacher is 16.5. Of course, that's a graphic which also contributes to the retention that we have with our educators. Next slide, please. If you look at campus leadership, we look at average experience of principals, of eight and a half, 8.5. Average experience of principals with the school district, 8.4. Average experience of assistant principals, 8.8, and assistant principals with the district, 8.7. This particular graphic remains at a constant and is at a higher average than the state because we grow our own, and of course, knowing that, we look at educators that are working through these curriculums in order for they to contribute, because they know the population, they know the language, and they're very much in tune with communities like ours that are considered border communities. Average years of experience of teachers, 13.8. Average experience of teachers with the district, 12.0. If we look at average salary, this is where the rubber meets the road when it comes to teacher salaries, and if you look at the graphic between what we have to offer and the state have to offer, our pay is a little higher than what is there compared to the state. Beginning teachers, $50,0876, one to five years, $54,077. Six to 10 years, $56,895. 11 to 20 years, $60,532. And over 20 years, $66,551. This is also a recognition to a board of trustees working in tandem or conjunction with the administration in order to make adjustments in salary as money is become available, and of course, also contributing to the retention of our educators. You look at actual salaries of teachers, regular duties and no supplementary pay, we're looking at 59,853, and of course, we do that with teachers, professional support, campus administration. The only one where the school, the only area where the school district is shortly behind the state average is in central administration, where our pay is relatively close, but just below the state average. Total instructional staff by percent is 55.2. So 55.2 is the instructional staff within the district and its respective campuses compared to the state, 64.6. Our turnover rate, which is a classic, and of course, it speaks well of our support by the Board of Trustees, it speaks very well of the direction set by the superintendent and his administration that contributes to staff wanting to continue, to remain here by pay, by benefits, by working conditions. Our turnover rate is 6.1% compared to the state's 16.8%. And this is a testament to what the school district does in order to support its employees. That concludes my presentation in the area of staff information. Thank you very much, and have a good afternoon and be safe.
Ms. Lessa? Ms. Lessa, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, yes, Mr. Ramirez.
Yes, ma'am. I was going to ask you from your presentation.
Yes.
How is it going to be this coming end of the year?
This coming end of?
Yes.
This coming end of year, they have also canceled accountability, but not start testing. And during the regular board meeting, Mr. Ramirez, I'm going to go over what the state has sent us on testing for this year.
Okay, because the accountability is going to be lesser, at the same token, it's going to be less teachers or the same teachers that are...
No, 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 instruction will remain the same, but accountability will be a little bit different. And I'll, I'll go into detail in the regular board meeting, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Leyda Benavides will continue.
Good morning. I will be presenting the financial standard reports. This data is from our 2018, 2019 financial data. During the regular board meeting, we are turning in our audit for fiscal year 2020. So next slide, please. You see a lot of numbers, but what I'm going to focus on is the all funds column and the per student, and compare it to the state, because it just doesn't make sense until you have something to compare to. So in the very first, total operating revenue, if you go to all funds, 443,160,739. But when you break it down per student, our revenue is 10,240 per student, and when you compare that to per student per state, you can see that United gets a little less per student than the average state. It's about $230 less per student. If you go to the bottom line, where it's still talking about revenue, it's capturing all our revenue, our debt revenue and interest income, everything, so it totals to 508,401, or per student, it's 11,747. And again, compared to the per student at the state level of 13,000, at the, at the end of the day, we actually bring in about $1,341 less per student. Now, this could be maybe because we have less debt per student than other districts out in the state. So that's kind of the story that it's telling us here. Next page, please. On expenditures, again, total operating expenditures, we are at 443 million, or $10,236 per student. Per student at the state level, it's 9,913. What this is telling us is that the revenue we bring in for our students, we spend on our students, and the majority of that is in payroll, and then you'll see the rest of the line items. And then if you go towards the bottom, if you want to go to the bottom of that same page, I don't, wait. Okay, I guess, okay, so then, the last part of this page will tell you how we spend those $10,236. And so we spend, I'm sorry, go to the previous page. We spend $5,561 per student in instruction, directly in instruction versus the state. So what this is telling me is, we're, we're kind of on average with all the districts in, in the state. So this, this gives us an indication of how we're spending our money, our money, per student, per type of activity. Next page, please. This, this one includes some additional expenditures. If you go to the grand total operating and non-operating, what they're doing in this slide is they're throwing in our debt service payment of 53, I mean, I'm sorry, 43,298, and additional 57.6 million also, and that's pretty much our construction money. So in total expenditures, the operating ones you saw on the page before, plus debt service per construction, we have a total of 543,919,000, or $12,568 per student versus the state at 13,108. So even though we have, we pay debt, and even though we have a construction program, in total, we, we spend less per student than the state average. The middle of the page, you'll see a breakdown of our operating expenditures per type of instructional program. So you'll see the basic educational services that we're, we're spending, about 4,388 per student. If you look at the state, it's a dollar difference, so that's telling me we're using our money pretty much the way other school districts use their money as well. So this will give you a good idea, special students with disabilities, 1,212, versus the state at 1,219. So again, it's, it's telling us, this is, we're, we're comparable to the way the rest of the state is spending money. And then, of course, the bottom line, again, is a total of 543 million, when you add your, our debt service payment of 43 million, and our construction money of 57 million, and then again, just repeated the, the information of 12,568, $12,568 per student versus the state at 13,108. Next page, please. Again, this is another way they look at how we're spending money. I'll just go straight to the bottom line. They're, they're counting disbursement... They're, they're counting disbursements, they're counting other types of expenses that we have beyond the, the operating debt service and construction money. But again, we're in line with the state. We actually spent or dispersed less per student, 12,744, versus the state at 13,942. And I know I've made this comment before, that this shows we actually spend less per student, but you saw the results of our instruction department that keeps on doing good things, our campus principals, our campus staff, with less money per student than the rest of the state. Our tax rate, just so that you can share with, with our constituents and taxpayers out there, our tax rate is less than the state average. We're at $1.2517, and the average is $1.3101. And then when we talk about fund balance, yes, our fund balance per student is less than the, than the state average, but I have to tell you that we do abide by our fund balance policy. We have about 60 days of operation in our fund balance, which is about two months of payroll. There was something in the legislative session being talked about fund balance. They don't want school districts to have too much, but at the same time, you know, you do have to have something in the bank to, to, for a rainy day. So I think our fund balance, and again, there's going to be a presentation on our current fund balance, because this was last year's. I think we're in good shape. And again, we don't have an overabundance of fund balance, but we're very careful how we budget and how we expand our funds. And that is, I think, the last page of my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Santos, and audience. Annette Perez, Director for Discipline Management, for the record. This next section five is a report on violent or criminal incidents. This is required to be part of our TAPR report, and there are particular type of disciplinary violations that make up this report. And we will go ahead and share those numbers with you on the next slide. As you can see, there was only one type of incident of all of the other eight that are identified, which make up the violent or criminal incidents. And at UISD, we had 35 assaults, and compared to the previous school year, we had 84. So we see a significant decrease. We had already moved into three-quarters of the school year before, of course, children went remote learning. So three-quarters of the school year had already expired, and we had 35 incidents at that point. So it's significant for us, and we do want to share that compared to the 84. And we, of course, continue with a lot of initiatives, and now Ms. Morales is going to talk about some of the initiatives we have to ensure a safe and secure school.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Good morning, Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Santos, and members of the audience. My name is Rebecca Morales. I'm the Executive Director for Federal and State Programs. If we could move on to the next slide. So I will be talking to you about Title IV and our activities that we have in the district to support safe and healthy students. Next slide, please. So these are our three components, our curriculum and instruction, our staff development, and our parental involvement components. Now, a lot of these initiatives have been very successful for our district, so we continue using those initiatives. Some of our newer initiatives, of course, are our trauma-informed practices, our suicide prevention programs, as well as our parent involvement. Last year in the spring, when we did close down, we did continue our parent involvement and support through social media as well as through Zoom and Google. Excuse me, next slide. So these were our evaluation summary findings. We did collaborate with Webb County Scan and did conduct an alcohol, tobacco, and other drug survey with our students. Unfortunately, because we shut down after spring break, we were not able to finish surveying our students, but these are the results that we found for surveying our middle and high school students from different parts of our district. We also do continue to conduct random drug testing, and there were 650 students that were drug tested. Of all of the students involved in extracurricular activities, and of 8,300 students involved and 650 students tested, only 13 students tested positive. We do have our on-demand drug testing kits that are available to campuses and parents, our Ropes Challenge Course that is stationed at our Step Academy that did, was able to hold 25 sessions last school year. We did not have any students expelled last year for bringing a firearm or a handgun to school. We did not have any campuses identified as persistently dangerous schools either. And then we did have our Uniting Families Initiative that did continue at Step Academy, where 104 students completed the required sessions, received a reduction in days, as well as some students and families that attended for three days and received a four-day reduction in placement. And this does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Okay.
Morales.
Yes.
With, with this pandemic, that the students are at house, has there been any report of any of the students misusing any kind of drugs or anything like that, ma'am?
You know what, Mr. Ramirez, that is an excellent question, and we actually just discussed this yesterday at our management meeting. We will be coordinating once again with Webb County. I've already reached out to Scan, and we will be conducting that survey once again because we are very interested, since the students have been mostly at home, in looking to see if there's been any change in the use of any alcohol, tobacco, or other drugs. So we are doing that, Mr. Ramirez, and we will be concluding, conducting that survey this year through Webb County again.
Well, that's a great help to the household and the community to avoid any, any student to be going in the wrong road and getting involved with the police. So that will be, it is fine, ma'am. Thank you very much for your?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
To conclude, some of the information for TAPR, we do have also a report on student performance in post-secondary institution. This is how they perform when they are going to universities and college. And if I, the statement on the bottom, approximately 75% of the students earned a GPA of a 2.0 or better when they were at two- or four-year public colleges and universities. And then the last thing that I have for you is just the information on the glossary. Thank you. The section seven has the glossary. So what we will be doing this year is we usually have booklets sent out to every campus. This year, we're going to have an electronic booklet, and that will be sent out to all the principals. We already will have all of this information on the website, so it's readily accessible to our parents and, and of course, to, to any patron of UISD. So just know that, that the Spanish glossary is the one that takes a little bit longer for the state to. So we will have that on our website as soon as it is released. And now I transfer it over to Mr. Gonzalez.
Ms. Lisa.
Yes.
Will you send a copy to each board member on the booklet?
Yes, yes, we will. It, it will be sent out to every board member, as well as every member of management and cabinet.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Ramirez, and Rodriguez, we're all board members. We celebrate. Port appreciation, ma'am. Would like to thank you for your continued support in our pursuit of educational excellence and success for principals, teachers, and students. And at this time, I'm going to turn it back to our DIC chairperson, Ms. Nadia Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. For the record, the time is 11:55. This concludes our public hearing and our DIC meeting. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
People, we call it. No public call.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Thank you, staff, and have a safe life, because we're, we're really, with this pandemic, it's going very hard. Thank you, ladies.